Good evening, everybody. This is the Lakeville Select Board Meeting of February 7, 2022. From a remote location, is anyone other than Lake Cam recording the meeting? I don't see anyone. Let's see, in accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the February 7, 2022 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Select Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam. And you should not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. Backslash. So tonight is going to be the first of three budget nights. This is the time of year where we start going over the budget. So we know at the last meeting, Ari presented us in conjunction with Christina and Todd Hassett and all the work of the department heads with the preliminary budget. So tonight, we will be meeting with the following departments: accounting, internet, town clerk, human resources, and town administrator. So Ari, I'd like to open it up to you first to see if you want to add anything to, if anything's come up between when we put all this stuff together, or if we should just jump in with the accounting department.
I can go ahead and give a, I figure what I do, Madam Chair, is give a quick update on a couple of things. And then let Todd give you an overview of the budget structure, some of the organizational changes we made and so on, then go into from there.
You know what? My apologies. I just saw that Brian is with us. So that means Darren, Mr. Chair, you have a quorum, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, so if you want to open your meeting?
Sure. I'll call the Lakeville Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:33. I'll start Brian Day.
Present.
Larry Constant.
Present.
Darren Beals, present.
Okay. All right. I'll give it back to you, Ari.
Thank you. So what I thought I'd do is just a quick, quick update, a couple of things, and then let Todd give you an overview of the budget structure and some of the changes we made organizationally. And then we'll, and then go from there into the departments if that'll work, if that works for everybody. So a couple of quick updates. Since the budget was prepared, we have received initial cherry sheets from the state. The numbers were a little bit lower than we expected in terms of the UG, the government aid, although we have some indications that might change in the legislature. And the smart growth numbers were flat, which was a surprise. I've been assured by DOR that the next iteration of the budget, which would be House Ways and Means, should be sometime in the next few weeks, will have an updated number for smart growth reimbursements. Hopefully, that'll be favorable. Also, since we introduced the budget, the school districts have started coming forward with their information. We received the request or the initial proposal, not the formal request, proposal of superintendent in the regional district in Freetown Lakeville. The number, as you know, was a bit higher than we expected it to be. We think there's some opportunity for positive room on that, and we'll see how that goes. It suffers from a couple of things. One is the rather paltry increase in Chapter 78 for minimum aid localities. Combined with the budget overall goes up by quite a bit, four and a half percent. So we know that there's some movement already in health insurance that they're looking at, a few other things. And frankly, we don't get as bad as Freetown does. So I think there's a common interest in getting that number down. Old Colony is coming out on Thursday. I don't have that number yet, although I've heard some some scuttlebutt that the number's a little better than we expected in the budget. So that'll be a favorable variance if that works out. So I'll work these through and over the next month or so, we'll have more information. I'm going to have, we'll have a standing update in our regular select board meetings for a budget update as well. So next meeting, February 14th, is going to have a quick update from me on anything new that we have, Old Colony, things like that. So with that, I'd like to head over to Todd and let Todd begin his overview.
Thank you, Ari, and good evening, everyone. What I'd like to do over the next 20 minutes or so is just give you an overview of how we got to where we are. We're pleased that we're presenting you this early in the process, a balanced budget for FY23. And I'd like to kind of go through some of the changes and highlight some of the things we've done through the process as we've developed this budget for your consideration. First, early in the fall, we've started to take a look at funding to support the operating budget. And we've, we've always tried to take the position that recurring revenue would support recurring expenses, and we wouldn't look to support the budget in any way with one-time sources such as free cash or retained earnings. So, excuse me, we're pleased that the property tax growth is, was really good, as you know, in FY22, when we set the tax rate, it was probably our sort of peak year in many years. It was over $630,000, and we typically have new growth in the 375 to 450 range, on average about $400,000 a year in most recent, in the past five years. The building permit activity continues to be really strong. We're probably about 40% higher at this point in the year in terms of permit revenue than we were a year ago. And that often has a 12 to 18 months lead time in terms of when the actual construction happens and when we're able to start capturing some of that growth. So we have presented the FY23 budget, assuming growth of $450,000, which represents about 1.7% in terms of our tax base, our levy base. The statutory two and a half percent is just under $650,000 for next year. And we also have, as you know, a number of debt exclusions. Most recently, the new police station that have been added through voter initiative, voter approval. And the debt exclusion impact right now appears to be just about flat for next year. So we we sort of had that, that peak with the police station coming on. We also have some work on Route 79 that's beginning to, we've just had an impact of interest on that particular debt exclusion. And we have some regional school debt as well that's been excluded that will roll out in a few years. So overall, we're anticipating property taxes, including new construction, to be up just over 4%, about 4.2% for next year. We believe the growth number we're using is on the conservative side in that there's certainly some, some potential for a much larger number, again, depending how construction goes through the spring and what the assessors are able to capture any value as of this coming June 30th. Ari mentioned to you state aid, another one of our recurring sources of funds, did come in a bit disappointing after the governor's budget was released in late January. So we're looking at a reduction in veterans' benefits. Unrestricted governmental aid is fairly flat. Chapter 78 is level funded. And as he said, as Ari said, as we, as the legislature goes through their process, we're, we're hopeful to pick up some a little ground on particularly on unrestricted governmental aid and smart growth. The third tier of our recurring revenues relates to local receipts. And as many of you know, this, this includes your motor vehicle excise tax. It includes license and permit revenues and departmental fees, investment earnings, and all the the sort of non-tax governmental, departmental fees that vary year to year, but have been fairly strong in recent years, particularly as I mentioned in the inspection area with permits. We've also had some new local revenue in the last two years, last year and this year, related to the cannabis enterprises that are now operating in town. And so for the most part, our excise, by the way, the bills that are just going out are about $116,000 higher than what we billed a year ago at this time. So we're, we're still seeing steady growth in that area as well. Investment earnings are off because of the rates, as you know, have declined over the last year. But we still feel that comfortably and conservatively, we can estimate just over a 5% increase in local receipts. And that that's a sustainable number that we should be able to beat in terms of actuals and contribute and back to replenishing free cash as we go forward. With respect to non-recurring sources, this is mainly what we use to focus on funding our capital plan, which we'll talk in great detail on Wednesday evening about. We've, as you know, had a very healthy free cash certification this year. The enterprise funds have struggled a bit during the COVID pandemic, and their retained earnings are not what we're used to, and they're modest, but we're managing our way through. We also have stabilization fund, and we have a capital and debt stabilization fund separate from our general stabilization fund. And we'll, we'll talk about that at some point. We do have proposals to increase some of our reserves to utilize some of this high free cash rather than spend it to set it aside for future needs, particularly in the capital area. We have some other sources of funds, the septic loan program, which does actually, as homeowners repay their loans, those repayments are used to pay off any related debt we have with respect to the septic loan program overseen by the Board of Health. On occasion, the Board of Assessors would release excess overlay on unneeded provision for property abatements and exemptions. We're not anticipating utilizing that source this year. But when you look at the five-year capital plan, you will see that we do introduce that again in FY24 the next year. Going forward, some modest use of overlay. And then as we get deeper into the capital plan on Wednesday, there are a few major items which we'll discuss that may involve asking the community to authorize borrowing. So that would be paid off over some period of time for larger acquisitions or projects. So with respect to the operating budget that the administration is recommending for your consideration, I just want to highlight some of the changes and things that may come up as you talk with each department, various department. With respect to the collective bargaining agreements in town, they're all settled, and FY23 marks the third year of three-year agreements. So that's all in place, good to go. Certainly, when we start working on FY24, there will be that additional effort involved in negotiating the new CBAs, but they're all settled through FY23. The non-union staff COLAs in the budget range from between 2 and 3%. We anticipate no position reclassifications at this time. And there are no foreseen retirements that would in some way impact the budget. So sort of getting into the rest of the staffing changes, as you know, mid-year this year, we were able to hire a new town plant, the first town planner in Lakeville. So that was a mid-year hire. We had half the salary in this year's budget, so next year's budget will reflect the full, a full year's salary for the new planner position. That was in the selectman's budget this year. We are carving that out and creating a planning budget, Department 175, which you'll see in general government. And, and we're also transferring a staff person from inspection over to plan to be the support for the town planner and the planning board. So you'll see a new department budget, if you will, in planning. But again, it's coming from selectmen and inspection. We also are backfilling or adding to inspection a halftime clerical support position, since we're removing this one to support planning. And there's also a part-time clerical position in the selectman's budget that will be moving to human resources. So human resources will be managing two part-time, what we call floaters, or staff that are able to be plugged in wherever the need is. There will still be some support for the selectman's office through this, but they're able to be assigned wherever there happens to be either a staff shortage or an illness or a particular project that another department needs assistance with, temporary assistance with. In the public safety area, you'll recall, this year's budget included the addition of two firefighters, which we funded for the last six months of the year. These were temporary positions since the pandemic. And they were added and funded fully through the Federal Cares Act program until December, the end of December. And so now they're being paid through the fire budget, and next year, much like the town planner being a mid-year hire, next year we'll have to fully fund those two firefighter positions. With, in the police department, we're recommending the addition, at the recommendation of the chief, the addition of a one patrolment position, which would be primarily focused on additional traffic enforcement. And when you meet with the chief on Wednesday, he can give you more details about that. That's probably the most major addition that the administration is proposing for you to consider for FY23. We're also recommending moving a part-time laborer at the Highway Public Works Department up to a full-time position to assist with all of the various projects that they're involved with in ongoing town maintenance. Again, Wednesday night, the DPW director can, can fill you in on, on some of the needs and how he plans to utilize this additional laborer position. And lastly, with respect to salaries and wages, we've also put in a modest amount added to the Consulon Aging Budget, just under $10,000, which is for an outreach program, which is an ongoing program that's been to this date funded through a state grant. There's question as to whether that state grant will continue next fiscal year. So if we get positive word, we'll take that out. But at this point, we're recommending that program continue with local funding, and it's just under $10,000. And lastly, we're also supporting adding $5,500 of part-time staffing wages to the elections budget to assist the town clerk with particularly early voting and all of the additional demands around elections that have cropped up in the last couple of years. And that's worth about $5,500. On the operating expense side of the budget, there's a few things I'd like to highlight for you, just in terms of increases or changes. First of all, you'll notice in the selectman's expense area, there's an increase to the audit services for our independent financial audit. This now also includes an additional $5,000 expense required because the town has received so much federal aid around the COVID-19 pandemic. So every community that receives $750,000 or more of federal aid in a given fiscal year must have this additional audit work done. And there's an added cost of about $5,000 for our audit firm to conduct this additional, produce an additional report. Also, every other year, we're required to have an actuary, an independent actuary, update our post-employment benefits liability, which is north of $11 million. And this is the year coming up where that will be done, and that work is generally accepted for a two-year period. So we engage an actuary every other year, and that's about $7,000. In the human resources budget, you'll notice a one-time line added, which I think Ari discussed back in January when we kicked off the budget with the board. And this will be to look at the non-union staff compensation and classification study. And the HR director will be with us, I believe, later this evening, and he can give you some more details on that one-time expense that he and Ari are pursuing for FY23. In the technology budget, as you know, last year, with the efforts of former selectman and current finance committee member, Brian Day, we really took a hard look at technology and developed a very detailed budget. And that served us very well to date. We do have some concerns around cybersecurity and disaster recovery, which is a big concern. Ari did share with you that we were able to obtain a community compact grant to assist with some of the initial costs around dealing with this, but we will have ongoing operating and maintenance service expense going forward. That's been added to the IT budget. So that's new for next year. With respect to the town office and the town building departments in general government, we've also consolidated the utility costs for, into this area from the old library, which is now becoming our land use inspectional office, sort of repurposed back to public use. And also, we've added in the utility costs to support the old historic townhouse. With respect to the facilities budget in terms of maintenance, they're already supporting those offices, but we're consolidating the utilities in general costs around those buildings into one town buildings budget, Department 192 in your budget book. 193 facilities, which is overseen by Nate Darling, we've also added some additional expense money to give him some maintenance support, some custodial support if needed, and also to allow the opportunity to hire outside OPM owners' project management services for a variety of facility-related projects that you'll see when we talk about the capital plan, just to help move things along as needed. So we've added about $30,000 in total to facilities we're recommending that would be used for those types of services. As Ari mentioned, the education assessments for the regional schools and the regional VOK school are just starting to come in. They're just being developed by those school committees. Excuse me. So we have placeholders in what you have before you. We're hoping by the end of February to be able to sort of true it all up. So that when the finance committee does their real hard look in the beginning of March, we've got a real firm, solid, balanced budget that the selectmen are supporting, and that we can move forward toward town meeting. In public works, we, the only thing of note that we've added on the expense side is we've, we've upped the snow and ice budget about $27,000. And we're trying to, over, when we have opportunity, when there's, there is new growth revenue, we're trying to sort of move this budget up a little bit each year to get to a point where perhaps it represents an average year's snow expense. We've been well under our five-year average for many years, and it's had necessitated the need for transfers either at town meeting or from the finance committee. So we're, we're going to try, as opportunities arise, to grow this budget a little bit to a, in an appropriate level for a typical winter. Lastly, almost lastly, with respect to employee benefits, we are, we've built in a 6% rate increase for our group benefits. The pension assessment for all of those employees that participate in Plymouth County Retirement is going up about $100,000, similar to what it went up in '22. And that's planned to be fully funded, I think, in the late 2030s, although that tends to move a bit. We'll talk a little later about other post-employment benefits for retiree healthcare. Because that's a fairly large liability that the community has going forward. Debt service is challenging for us in that we, we have very little debt per capita, we, other than the police station, which I mentioned earlier. We do have a few items that will be rolling in, the Route 79 project, our share of, of the cost, excuse me, for that project. Where we've ordered a new ambulance that will be, will begin to finance later this fiscal year, have our first interest expense in FY23. And I'm pleased to, the board may know this, our new treasurer was able to secure through the state clean water program, a loan that will cover the septic homeowner loan program at a very low interest rate. And that, again, is repaid through homeowner loans, no impact to the taxpayers. But the challenge for us going forward, and particularly as we look at the capital plan on Wednesday evening, is as we take on new debt, we don't have a lot of capacity within the levy limit. Most of the debt that we have is excluded by the vote, by the voters through a debt exclusion vote. So as that debt either matures, or as we take on new debt, there's not a lot of capacity within our levy limit to take on major debt without some voter approval. So again, as opportunities arise, if, if new growth continues to be real favorable, we'll probably be looking at this over the next year or so as to how we can best carve out some of the operating recurring revenue to cover recurring the need for debt expense. So you'll see a lot of movement or consolidation. As I mentioned, we carved out planning. We've, we've moved some of the public buildings into single budgets that were in various places. We are looking at a number of initiatives going forward, which we'll talk about as we, as you meet with each department. The, I should say, the two enterprise funds were proposing balanced budgets for both for next year. There will be a $95,000 operating tax subsidy for the transfer station, which is keeping in line with, and a little less than what we've done in recent years. But they're operating fairly strongly, although they do still need some tax support. There's one small capital item, which will be funded from their retained earnings. The Park Department, the Park Commission has submitted a balanced budget, which includes using 20 A balanced budget which includes using twenty thousand of their retained earnings. Specifically for facility improvements, modest. Improvements that might be needed, but their. General operating costs will be supported through. Operating revenue generated at the parks. They do have several items in their capital plan, which which you'll talk with them about tomorrow and perhaps Wednesday. Some of that is is proposed to come from their retained earnings and some from free cash. And the reason we're we're opting for some free cash is because. They don't have the retained earnings to support more than what we're recommending at this time. The capital plan. We've given you an initial five year plan from FY twenty three through twenty seven. The FY twenty three. Amounts, we're, we're, we're working on a cup, moving a couple of the projects. Around, in particular, I'd highlight for the board that. We're going to be ready sooner than we thought to move forward with the highway building. So we had that in in the initial document. Suggested as an FY twenty four expense. We're trying to move that up to twenty three. On the other hand, the fire station town hall feasibility study that's underway now. Will likely not require as much design funding. As we suggested for twenty three, so. Will be likely modifying that number down substantially. Moving the highway building in so that that can get addressed sooner. And there are a number of facility projects. That you'll see in the plan. Including a feasibility study to look at in addition for the senior center. Which would be funded from private funds. There's a future year where we're looking at replacing the roof at the public library. There are a variety of projects in the parks, as you know. And the major one on the five year plan is is what the town is is going to want to do. With respect to the current town hall fire station. And that will start to unfold over the next year or so as. As the feasibility and preliminary design begin to develop. Also, the capital plan includes a number of vehicle replacements, you know, typically. We do two or three police cruisers a year. There's also a command vehicle for the fire department. Some equipment for the public works department. And an ongoing. Capital initiative in information technology. And the major item that will have. Discussions with the fire chief on Wednesday night involves. His recommendation that. The department needs a new ladder truck, which is a major expense. It's estimated close to one point four million dollars, so that. Is gonna take some study and thought. And lastly, we've continued the roadway improvement line in the capital plan. To to partner that with the state's chapter ninety program so that. We have a better shot at better maintaining our roadways. So we've got three hundred and seventy five thousand, you'll see, proposed. For the roads. Just to wrap up, in addition, we're recommending. Adding some free cash to some of our reserves, we're we're suggesting. Based on the actuarial study for the post employment benefits that. Three hundred and ten thousand be added annually. To the trust, as I said, we have a liability currently of about eleven point four million. And we have assets of just over about two and a quarter million. To cover that eleven point four million dollar liability currently. We're also suggesting adding seven hundred thousand to the general stabilization fund. Which has a balance of just over one million dollars and is. Is under the town's policy in terms of. How much we're funding as a percentage of our operating budget. And as I said, for retained earnings, we're we're proposing using seventy thousand of park retained earnings, twenty for their budget, fifty for their capital plan. And about twenty five thousand of the transfer station retained earnings. And that that will leave them with with just over a hundred thousand. They do have a major truck purchase in their capital plan, you'll see. For I believe it's FY twenty six, so we're. Trying to make sure that when that comes up. That we don't have to go to the taxpayers that will be able to use retained earnings. To for the acquisition of that equipment. We, as I said, free cash was certified at a at a very healthy number this year, just over two point four million. And with all of the the capital plan proposals and and these reserves. We would still be looking to come out of town meeting if everything was approved. With over four hundred and forty thousand. Unused and still available in free cash that could either roll forward. For future years or. In the event we had some other need come up between now and the end of the year, give us. That flexibility, you know, whether it's snow funding or. Some other need that's that's not foreseen at this point, so we feel we've we've we're taking a conservative position. And we'll. Be well positioned going forward to. Continue supporting a robust capital plan and the needs of the community. On a conservative basis and a sustainable basis, so. With that, I'll I'll turn it back to Ari, thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Madam Chair, for you. You're muted.
Sorry. So. At this point. Does anyone have a question, a general question on the update like? Todd suggested will be. Todd indicated we'll be talking to the department heads for them to, you know. Talk specifically about something, but does anyone have a general? Question on everything that. That Todd just went over. And just because Brian is here tonight and Todd made mention of it. I also wanna just say that that was a lot of work, Brian, that you did last year on the technology. On the technology budget, just that all of the technology, so that that's still. You know, like Todd just said, is still quite helpful, that work that was done, so again, thanks for, you know, for digging into that last year.
It's my pleasure, hopefully it was helpful, and I see Bob is here, I hope it worked out reasonably well this past year.
Does anyone have any question for anybody before we go right to the accounting department? Which is, yes, Brian.
If I may, one quick statement and one question, first, I just wanna say thank you to. You know, the select board and to town administrator's office and all the department heads and everybody, because this new book we got this year was excellent. Love the narrative, love the explanation of why something shifted around, I thought it was a. A much needed improvement, and it made it at least for myself much easier to digest and go through and see how things were going.
Brian, I'll second that as well.
One quick question if I may. The F, it's all the way to capital plan, we were just kind of getting the update from Todd there. FY twenty four DPW facility improvements, is that on top of the money we voted in? A couple of town meetings, is that getting added to that project, or is this in replacement of, or? Is that money?
That that isn't, you have two thirty five that you've appropriated over time prior to. We, there's identified by DPW some additional needs in the parking lot as well, repaving and so on. And then the building itself. Where are pretty certain at this point that two thirty five wasn't close to enough to do the project as envisioned. So five hundred's a placeholder. Until we get the actual number from the OPM.
Okay, that was my next question, if the OPMs are gonna get us a stronger number to hopefully finish this out and get them a new home.
That that is the plan, one of the reasons why we want to advance it is that they're, is that they're, they're going to have schematic design ready for us in time for. Going to time for spring town meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Hey, anyone else?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say thank you, Todd, for that very clean and crisp summary. So that I'm looking forward to hearing the. You know, the department heads. You know, embellish a little more on what what you've presented already, so I appreciate that.
Thanks so much, Lorraine.
All right. Anybody else? I don't see anything, okay. So, accounting department, I believe, is on page seventeen. There, it's probably one of the smaller. Departments, but you know, and looking right at the organizational chart, the note I have next to it is. Two people do a whole lot of work. So that's, you know, but I'll 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 let you go over it if. You want, or Ari, I don't know which one of you, but. It's pretty self explanatory, I think.
Madam Chair, one thing I'll mention before Todd speaks, this is this applies to all the budgets. As you'll recall during the budget process. I believe it through the preliminary outlook in December, and then we mentioned it again at the at the budget presentation. We have two percent raises for all the union employees, full time union employees. And for the. Non-union employees, we put, we have three percent raises for the non-union employees. Full time, and the part timers, I believe, were two percent. You'll see that throughout the document.
Okay.
Those are considered COLAs.
Yep. All right. Okay, so do you wanna just go through it quickly?
Yeah. Yeah, I've already spoken enough, but on pages seventeen and eighteen in your budget document. You'll see a brief overview of of the accounting office. As Leah said, we have myself and a and a full time. Senior accounting specialist who does a tremendous amount of work. For the the town. All of the receipts and dispersments come through our office. We're responsible for. You know, maintaining the trial balance and balance sheet and all the financial reporting. We provided at the bottom of page seventeen. Highlight of a few things that we we did. Some of the reports that we do annually. And again, everything's reviewed and classified through our office. We maintain the financial system for the town. On the expense side, I'm not a town employee, so you'll see me on the expense side. Under financial services. And then we do budget a modest amount for training for the staff person, which sometimes we utilize some years and some we don't. Some years we don't. We have. Binding requirements for permanent records, general ledgers and certain detail reports, annual reports. And, you know, our largest expense, if you will, would be just, you know, toner cartridge for for our printers. We do also, you know, print all of the town vendor checks. And the purchase orders. And then there's a modest amount for state association dues and. Any travel that might be associated with the training programs. And again, the last couple of years due to the pandemic, we didn't really. Go anywhere, if you will, we didn't, like you'll see with a lot of departments. The most recent history of theirs is is not a typical year for. A lot of the departments, but. It's a two point six percent increase. And. As Leah said, it's fairly straightforward, but.
Does anyone have any questions on this specific accounting budget? I don't see, okay, Brian.
I may, you know, but. Todd, you know, as select member Carbone said earlier, fantastic. Summary as always, you know, it's curious if, apologies if I get this wrong. Have you guys in your office, or are you still planning on doing the the electronic cash management and PO system, is that something still on the radar?
It's on the radar, Brian, I I actually just had a conversation late last week, we have a new treasurer collector, as you know. Who's got a lot of experience with the the product that the town uses. The, and. We're, we're still in the sort of exploratory, she's just getting, you know, sort of her feet on the ground. And based on our conversation last week. We weren't sure, to be honest, whether we were, whether. There'd be value, given the size of the community. But it is, it is on the radar. I just don't have a clean answer for you right now.
That's okay, so it's not reflected in this, then it's still a decision to be made.
Correct.
Okay, that's right. Thanks, appreciate it.
Sure.
Anyone else questions for? Todd or Ari on the accounting department? Okay. I think that. Looks good. Again. Todd, you know, thank you so much. I I know we had spoken at last week's meeting about the budget book with all the information in it. You know, and I definitely appreciate your your summary here. And I appreciate you answering my questions all throughout the year too, so.
Of course.
Yeah. So, so that's great, Rich, do you have anything on the accounting budget?
Oh, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Lorraine, any last words?
No, no, pretty straightforward.
Okay, all right, so I think we are good with the accounting budget, Ari. You agree with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next up, we have internet technology, and that is Bob McNally is with us.
Actually, information technology, so yeah, but.
Information technology, sorry, was that my eyes or?
One point, I think, in early version of this agenda did say internet technology, I corrected that.
So, information technology, sorry.
So we have Bob McNally here to answer any detailed questions, I'll give you a general overview. This is entirely contracted service now, hence there's no personnel costs anymore in that in that account. It does go up by disproportionate amount, I'd say, for a couple of reasons. The biggest reasons are, the biggest drivers are maintenance agreements and contractual services. Maintenance agreements increases for the DR site and the various contracts, contracts involved in supporting that site. Bob gives some more detail on that, the contractual services, I believe, is mainly the Nutanix. Product which is our, 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 sorry, our firewall service. That will, that that is up for renewal this year, so, so the first year that cost is in there, wasn't, that wasn't in FY twenty two. Bob, is there anything you wanna add?
Ari, actually, Nutanix is actually the the virtualization, that's. Virtual servers and and the file storages.
And it was servers, yeah, virtual servers, thank you.
Welcome. And I do wanna reach out and thank Brian, the the work that Brian had done last year was was really helpful to to me, and I worked with Ari and Todd to try and get the budget numbers repaired. That really gave quite a nice breakdown.
Your your extensive notebook, Brian, was very helpful. We all use that quite a bit.
Welcome.
Happy to answer the questions you have, these are all fairly straightforward, they are, they are up a bit, IT tends to cost a lot. And the, but we are, I am. Really pleased by the work we've done over the past eight months to improve our environment. And secure it in a way that frankly wasn't before, we've come a long way and a number of fronts, including the. The server replacement, the acquisition of the DR grant. Move for Nutanix and number of areas, upgrading our our defenses and also the cybersecurity grant. Which is something that everyone's starting to get involved in now, which you'll find very helpful from an education standpoint. Becoming a much stronger, more robust and readily prepared organization. When it comes to the various threats that are out there.
And one other item that we have added is a security information event management system. We basically have things that are monitoring everything that's going on on the network internally and externally. And that gives us twenty four by seven logging of everything that's going on in the network with real time event detection. So if there is some anonymous activity that is detected, we are notified immediately. And those events can be correlated. And those events can be correlated between something that's going on a server or something on a PC, something that's occurring on the firewall. So we've got a much better security posture to have insight into what is really going on in the network.
I have a few questions. Do the town employees have town-issued laptops or do they use their own devices?
Pretty much everybody has a town-owned laptop. There are a couple of people that do not have town-owned laptops, but if they're going to connect to the network, I put my security stack on that, on that device. I want it protected. I don't want anything touching the network that I don't control.
It's all dual factor, I assume?
Dual factor is ongoing with Microsoft. Right now, we are in the process of implementing that. The VPN right now is password-based, but we are in the process of adding multi-factor to that.
Okay, and this last question. Does the town have cybersecurity insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
We have cyber insurance, yes, we do. That was something we actually had prior to my coming here. We just, we just did the renewal this year. So it's, it's good that town has invested in that for some time now.
Thank you.
Brian, any questions?
Come on, Brian.
This is your area. I'll be good on this one. No, I just, I'm glad to see the costs are, you know, even though it's 10%, it is within reason. Things do go up when it comes to contracts and such, and the town's certainly been adding new features and stuff, certainly with the move to a lot more online registrations and forms and permitting and whatnot. So those numbers are going to gradually go up over the years. But job well done to everybody involved in getting the DR grant. That was fantastic. I mean, we've seen in our town how a couple telephone poles or flood can really mess this town up. So having a couple of locations where we've got redundant hardware and another place for town employees to go jack in and get their work done is fantastic. So I'm glad to see that coming back to life.
Okay. Lorraine or Rich? Lorraine?
I do it, Tom. Just if you wouldn't mind, Bob, just again, can you talk a little bit about just the increases for the maintenance agreements and the contracted services? Because I know we're contracting, you know, services with your company. Are we contracting with anybody else at this point?
The primary IT contract services is with me. There are, there are some, the maintenance agreements are for the Nutanix cluster you have right now. There's a renewal that's coming up there, and then part of the DR, there's going to be an ongoing maintenance agreement for that. So that's, that's most of that cost right there.
Now, do we see those percentages going up again the next year for the same amount? Or is it this, is this like a two-year thing?
The, when the original Nutanix was purchased, it was done with a, there was a three-year maintenance built into it. So you won't see this dramatic an increase next year, as we've done maintenance for one year this time. So we'll see a small percentage, five percent or whatever, whoever the renewal is next year over this year.
Okay. All right. And if we added an awful lot of software from the previous year?
We've added the security stack. Basically, everything that touches the network. I have a multi-layered approach of security for signature-based antivirus, next-generation antivirus, breach detection. So there are agents on everything that touches the network. So there has been an increase in that software there. We've also seen a growth in email, where basically every town employee now has email, whereas some, some didn't, and some of the boards were using, some of the employees were using Gmail accounts, et cetera. So we've had some increase there, where we've purchased the licensing from Microsoft 365 for every town employee. And then, then that adds, on top of that, then there's a security stack that goes with that to protect against spam and things that are going on.
Okay, because I know that, you know, cybersecurity is important to address. And we'll all be taking, we haven't, some of us haven't finished the class yet, but just so that we're more aware and more cautious about what to look for as things come in. And I'm sure you've increased your measures to make sure that those are monitored more, so that there probably will be some coming in, because they all come in, they all get in.
Yes.
But.
Yeah, we do have security out, the security software, which basically analyzes what email is coming in, and it tries to do a job of filtering things out. So I think a large percentage of what is getting sent to the town doesn't even make it. It is stripped out before it actually gets delivered to the mailbox. If something does make it through, then on each computer, we have that security stack that will protect against anything that's in trying to execute a script or trying to execute a memory or trying to write to the disk, any kind of malware. And then we also, as part of that security information event monitoring, all of that activity is being logged and correlated, and we do get 24/7 notification if something odd is happening.
Okay, good.
If a device is attempting to do something, the systems operation center, Security Operations Center, will actually disconnect that device from the network and then notify me that there is an issue. So if there's something going on, it won't spread. They'll basically kick the device off the network, let us know there's a problem, and we can investigate it while it's off by itself.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep, Brian?
One quick comment, Madam Chair, to Bob and Green Rivers. You know, to give them more kudos, I don't know how much it affected the budget for FY23 coming up. But in addition to all the work they've done, just getting things working well and more securely, they also identified a number of areas, kind of, I think, late spring, early summer last year, where we weren't actually properly licensed for a bunch of stuff either. So they made sure that we're also trued up and running, you know, in, in, in good standing with various companies to make sure that everything is going well. So I don't, there may have been some addition due to that kind of system we didn't realize we had that grew over the years, that they trued us up and got us right.
Okay. Rich, anything on your end?
The only thing I want to say, Darren, I assume I'm muted. Darren, is that, you know, not every employee has a laptop, but the important functions, you know, in Town Hall, they had laptops so they could work at home, and those laptops were paid for by the CARES money. It wasn't paid for by the town. So we probably bought, I don't know, 25 to 30 laptops anyway, somewhere in that area, that was paid for by the CARES money.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else questions, comments on the IT budget? Ari, last word?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Bob McNally, thank you very much. I think you're free to go.
Very good. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Okay, next we have Lillian Drain, our town clerk. Page thirty, is that correct?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you.
So I know just Todd mentioned that we were adding at least $5,500 for elections. I know that you've been, you know, just working in overtime just to get all the election stuff done. So really happy that we can add that extra. I think we did add something last year, but I'm glad to see that, you know, that we were able to do that again this year. So I'll just let you and/or Ari talk about the town clerk budget, clerk's office budget.
Sure. You want me to go ahead, Ari?
Go ahead, love.
So on my salaries, I went up 4.4% due to step increases and and COLAs. On my town clerk expense, I went over a little bit over 17%. That's because I had to switch over a line item from my registration expenses and brought it over to my town clerk expenses due to databases that I'm maintaining for the office that I need in regards to courts and commissions, dog licensing, underground storage, public records requests. All these databases is making my life a little bit easier. On my election expenses, I did, my increase was 5.25%, and that has to do with extra poll workers that I'm going to be needing for this election that's coming up. And it also includes feeding them. So early voting is here to stay, of course, and the vote by mail is here to stay. So with early voting, they are extending that to 15 days with, with the regular election, and then with the primary, they want to extend it to seven days. So that, as you can see, that's an increase. And then in my registration expenses, I did have to go up and due to the increasing printing my census and my street listings. And of course, the ink cartridges for my printer that I have to print every single notice, request. So on that, I did go up 2.1%. So I, I am asking for 5,500 for temporary help for this election cycle. I'm hoping that that will be, I know it's somewhat of a small amount, but I don't know if it's going to be enough, but we'll see. It was very challenging for the 2020 election. The help that I had was not enough. So since the vote by mail is here to stay, I'm hoping to hire two poll workers to help me throughout this challenging cycle that we're going to have.
Sorry, okay. Thank you. Ari, anything to add before I open it up for questions?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments for our town clerk?
Yeah, Lily. Yeah, sorry, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Lily. So based on these numbers, are you, like, it sounds like you think this is going to be sufficient, but you're not confident it will be. Is that true? Or how comfortable are you with these?
These are the numbers, that's the number I used for the, for the general election in 2020 and for the state primary. So I am. And that's with me putting in more hours and also my assistants, so. We'll just, we'll make it work.
Okay, all right. So you feel somewhat comfortable?
I do, I do, I do. In 2024, which would be the presidential election, I can see that number growing. Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I just, I'm going to just piggyback, thank you, Darren, for asking that question, because I just, I know that this is, a lot of changes had come up for our town clerk with regarding to the early voting and, you know, vote by mail and all of that. So I really just wanted to make sure that, you know, Lil, you are comfortable with what you're presenting here, because I know there's a tremendous shift in your department for this, so.
I am. Okay. Thank you.
Rich, anything?
No, I just, you know, the last two years for the town clerk have been very difficult, very challenging, and, you know, I don't know what we'd do without Lillian. She's done a terrific job, and she really has. She's always stepped up to do whatever, and I see her working on Sundays, too, so.
I try to hide, but that doesn't work.
No, we know you're there. We know you're there. So is there any? Do we get any assistance at all for early voting or from the state or any?
Nope. It's an unfunded mandate. The only thing they're paying is the postage for, for the voter to return that ballot.
For the voter to return the ballot, but if someone prints off a sheet from the website and sends it to the office to get a ballot, we're paying the postage on that ballot going from the clerk's office to the person's house?
Correct.
Okay, and then that person can mail it in for free, but there is no reimbursement to the town for?
Nope.
Okay.
As, as you could see, my postage went up, I think, in 2020, yeah, FY22, $11,000, because that was short on postage. That was because everybody requested a vote by mail ballot.
Yep. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
In the similar vein to the earlier question, I mean, Clip Drain's numbers, and you add them all up, even though, you know, the percentages might look a little higher. We're looking at, what, 11,000 or so total increase? I mean, I sense a little bit of hesitation. Is there a number that would make you feel more comfortable? You work an ungodly number of hours to make this happen.
I do. I don't know, I just don't want to ask for more than. I'm comfortable with that. Yeah. I'm lucky we have two floaters in town and hoping to utilize them as well if I need to. So that's my backup plan.
For what it's worth, Madam Chair, or Brian, sorry, what it's worth, Brian, on my end, I'll do, you know, Lily and I have a very good partnership, a very good relationship. And, you know, anything she needs, I make sure to get her. So, you know, if we're going to a real problem, we'll make sure that everyone knows. If we have to do a transfer some sorts of time in the future, we will take care of that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else questions or comments for our town clerk, Lillian Drain? All right. If not, Lily and I will just reiterate what everyone else has said. Thank you very much. I do believe, out of, you know, a lot of the things that you do in the town clerk's office, which is really so much, you know, I have a lot of confidence in our election process. And, you know, with all the awful stories and whatever, I know that when someone's voting in Lakeville, I know there's someone watching over that election with Hawkeyes. So.
Definitely.
Yeah, so I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
All right, so I think, I think we're good with the town clerk's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support, everybody. Thank you.
All right, so next I see with us John Bierella, who is our Human Resource Director, who is here to discuss the Human Resources budget.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, again, my name is John Bierella. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Director of Human Resources. And again, here to present the budget. If it pleases the board, I was, I was going to go through the, strictly the items that have changed and address those. But if you like, I can go line by line as well.
I don't know, I'm okay with the changes.
Okay. So under Human Resources and Payroll, the only significant change is you'll see that that number has gone up from nineteen, roughly 19,000 last year to a little over, almost 42,000. And that's strictly because we have a person who's a floater, who was previously in another budget, who is now going to be under the HR budget. So it's not really an actual increase in overall cost. It's just a, you know, a new placement in terms of where that salary is being budgeted. Under Human Resource Expenses, we're asking for approximately an increase of $25,000 in contracted services, and that is to conduct a classification and compensation study for the non-union personnel. This will impact roughly 56 people with 36 unique job titles. It is for an in-depth classification and compensation study, which will include, just, you know, just to hit the high notes here, an evaluation of the positions themselves, meaning looking at job descriptions, having interviews with employees in these positions to evaluate whether or not their jobs, actually their actual work, matches the description of their positions. You know, making changes that are necessary based on those findings, and then taking those and comparing them with. and comparing them with communities of similar budget, similar size, things of that nature to determine, you know, are our folks doing more or less than people in other cities and towns, you know, what does their compensation structure look like, is it externally and internally competitive? You know, making suggestions to perhaps our salary ranges, among other things. So it's really for an in-depth analysis and it's to gather information that's not, you know, readily and publicly available, and I'm sure we'll have some questions on that as I wrap, but I just wanted to give a short introduction of what that is. I'm asking for some additional budget for training and education. As the board may be aware, we're hiring a new HR Administrative Assistant. And what I would like to do is, I would like to take this person and turn them into more of an HR practitioner versus doing strictly administrative work. So I'd like to put some funds in there to get this person some classical HR training, perhaps even obtain a certificate or attend a certificate program in Human Resource Management. So that's the reason for that. Asking a little bit in terms of advertising, again, just in case, it's been a very competitive environment on the recruiting front, and I just want to make sure that we have enough budget in the, excuse me, in the budget, should we have to seek some external resources such as the MMA website or, you know, ZipRecruiter or things like that, if we happen to get stuck. Other than that, I mean, there's a slight uptick in dues and subscriptions. And again, that's just to make sure that myself and the other person in HR have, you know, current MMA memberships and memberships to the Society for Human Resource Management. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Okay. Ari, do you want to add anything to that?
I think John did a good job of describing what we're looking at for the class and comp study, I've talked to you about that a few times now. You know, the key is to try to create a system that is less ad hoc and more deliberate in terms of the way it handles the delivery of compensation and utilization of compensation as a way to incentivize performance. We're also going to be looking at some of the governance issues that we've talked about when it comes to the personnel sort of approval and regulation approach, the way we handle those things, mostly through benchmark analysis and things like that. We've, you know, these types of studies are very useful when they're done with an outside party who can take a good look at what we're doing in an impartial way and make some good solid, you know, objective recommendations on the way to go forward. There, I think it's really important if we are, we keep moving this organization forward to look at ways to make, to ways to, to, to move within, especially the non-union workforce, because they tend to be the managers in, and find ways to incentivize their performance and and reward the highest performers and also give them a good reason to stay. So, you know, all those things are things that we've, that we're working on. This goes part and parcel with what we're doing on the benefit side as well. We've talked about that as well, the, we're going to be engaging with the unions very soon on the delivery of health insurance, as we've discussed in the past. And this is to the other side of that in some ways. We're just looking at ways to bring our organization forward in the way it handles classification, compensation, delivery of resources and utilization of those resources.
Okay. Um, so, does anyone from the Finance Committee have any questions?
Sorry, I have a quick question, Ari. So what is your, without having done the study, obviously, what is your gut feel for Lakeville? Do we, are we high-end, low-end, in the middle, if you had to guess, as far as?
I think we're on the lower end in some cases and in the higher end in others. I actually, um, well, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something I shouldn't do, which is predict an outcome. But I, this is my observation, just from my time in the business. We have a situation in Lakeville, it's not dissimilar to the situation we had in Bedford when I came there, my prior employer, which was that the mid-level people were paid pretty well. The ones who are closer to the union contract, so they tend to write off above those costs. But the higher level people, the ones that are hardest to recruit, tend to be the ones that are paid the least competitively. So what we've had to do is kind of jury-rig as we went along our compensation for specific positions, and so there's really no rhyme or reason between the different department heads and what they make or don't make or so on. It's whatever was needed at the time to get that person on board. And, you know, there should be some room to be able to negotiate, that's fine. But you, you know, for the good of the organization, for organizational cohesiveness, morale and retention, you don't want to have, you know, too much of that going on, if you can help it. So, so I think there's going to be some, I would think there'd be some findings as far as that goes. I think it's very important that we develop a pay bands for these positions so that people who are the good performers, you know, can be rewarded. And, and, you know, and doesn't mean that everybody gets that, maybe you have some type of pool every year where you give performance, we can give performance, you know, increases for people. But, you know, we have, we have a on a somewhat inequitable situation at the moment with the non-union people, they get their annual COLAs. There's no steps, there's no, and I don't know if I want steps, but there's no pay for performance, there's nothing besides COLAs. So there's really no incentivization at all. And, and that, that's, you know, we have good staff, they work really hard, and I've been really impressed in my nine months now here with the dedication that they have. But I also think that there are ways to recognize and incentivize that behavior.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Hey, Brian?
One quick question if I made a, Ari, I think you mentioned this in your opening presentation, but just to confirm, that study, is it also going to look at the the levels and steps that we do have, because here, remember, there were some that really just made no sense. You would think they'd be relatively similar increases, but some were much bigger deltas, some were smaller, will that be revisited?
The intention is to look at all the non-union. So that would be every, you know, also anyone outside bargaining units, because bargaining units are bargaining, you have to negotiate. So there's no point in doing a class and comp study for the union groups. So this is strictly for the non-union area where I think we feel, where I think there's a general consensus that the least amount of sort of comparative equity. So, so that, so that, so whether they're, whether in the lower levels that have steps or the higher levels that don't have steps, you know, we're going to be looking at everybody.
Okay.
Excuse me, everyone, I'm sorry, just wanted to let you know my computer crashed, that's why you lost me, I'm logged in on my phone right now, which is why I'm not going to turn my camera on.
Okay. Larry, did you have a question?
I did. What is, what is our non-union job retention right now? Is there a high turnover rate? Is there a concern that we're looking at?
There's a difficulty in recruitment, we've had a lot of trouble with. And we've had some, you know, we've had some turnover, not too much of the highest levels, although we've got, we, you know, in the past year, we tried to recruit, we recruited four executive positions, five include me. That, you know, which is a decent percentage of the top echelon of the organization, so it's been a decent amount of turnover.
I would, I would echo Ari's comments on that. You know, I don't, even in my short time here, I don't see a lot of turnover, but I do see that, you know, recruiting is, is a bit of an issue. If you look at, you know, some of the newer employees, most and vast majority of them, you know, don't take the health insurance and that's been an issue, but, you know, it's something that's being worked on, I think we're gonna, we're gonna come out the other side of this.
Thank you both.
Lorraine, any question?
Just, you know, with what Ari was just mentioning, there was one retirement out of those four, you know, one shift in position and then two new hires for that. So I just wanted to make that, that known, that it wasn't just, you know, four positions that we had to place because of anything other than that.
Yeah, they were, Lorraine's correct, several of them were new positions. We, we, we had a lot of trouble hiring several of them, but yes.
Um, Rich?
No, I think we're going to have to have a lot of discussion on this, this proposal, but we'll see, that'll take time. I just want to clarify, John, one thing, I just want people to understand that you mentioned the new position for the HR Administrative Assistant, it's really not a new position, it's a replacement. Because that, that person that was there went to work for another department, so it's, it's not a new position, so.
Right, no, I just meant I was hiring a new person.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, people think it's a new position, but anyways, no problem.
So the only comment that I'll have, and I know I've mentioned this to, you know, department heads and Ari, I don't know, John, so I'll just say it so you can hear it from me too. When oftentimes, you know, people will do comparisons and they're comparing salaries with like-sized towns, but not comparing qualifications. So is, is that all sort of included in this, this study?
Yes, most certainly is, and that's the point of, of bringing in, you know, a third-party vendor, someone who has the time, the expertise and the ability to do a really deep dive to make sure that, you know, a person who has a title here in Lakeville has similar responsibilities, experience, qualifications and so on to the person that they're being compared with in another municipality. It's not something that you can do just by, you know, anybody can go and look at the budget of another town and, you know, look at a job title and see how much it pays. That's not what this is, this is to really do the, the work it takes to compare apples to apples.
Okay. Okay. I, I do think this is a, you know, much bigger conversation to have, but is anyone, does anyone have any other questions on the actual budget itself right now with that earmarked in there? Okay. All right. And I think that's it, any last word on that one, Ari?
No ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you very much, John, and I'm sorry, I will get your name right soon, I always say Virella, but it's V, is it Virella?
V R O.
Virella, okay, I'm sorry, I will try to make that correction. Thank you, John. All right, so next we have, look at that, Ari Sky, Town Administrator, to go over the Town Administrator's budget.
Hello. So I'm, yeah, in the budget document, the part that goes into Select Board Town Administrator is fairly lengthy, so I'm going to kind of walk through it a bit. I'm going to start just with the Select Board piece, which is also Town Administrator. It changes quite a bit, goes down net by about 18%. That's mostly because of a lot of reallocations and one-time expenses no longer in. So I'm going to go over those real quick. The personnel is affected by the floater and they're going to HR. The town planner going to the planning budget. Partially offset by full funding for the assistant to the administrator. Contractual Services, there are a number of consolidated numbers, oh, sorry, I skipped, I skipped. Contractive services, contracted services goes from 30 to 20 net. That's actually, because it's actually even a bigger increase, decrease in the looks because there's a consolidation from other general government, you'll notice on page 16, $10,000 that got moved out. That $10,000 went over to Select Board, and then we also reduced net by about 10,000, so about 20,000 off. That was mainly due to need or lack thereof. The money that had been spent last year was spent primarily on the TA search, and that's no longer needed. We, however, we did move the money from general government that covers the minute-taking transcription services that we, that we have. So then there are a few other changes here and there of money moved around to reflect actual costs that we're experiencing, that we've been experiencing. One of the more significant ones, some of the meeting costs have gone up with me on board, I have various MMA needs and, and, you know, another ICMA and so on that I, that I do. And there's also, you know, we also had a number of savings in offsetting that and advertising and so on. And bringing on the assistant, yes, has raised our dues and subscriptions expenses a bit as well. So that's everything in Select Board. I'm going to pause for a minute, see if anyone has any questions about that before I go on to the other sections.
Anyone questions on the Select Board part?
Under the, you had said that the 20, what was it, 20,000 for the search, correct?
There was about 9,000 spent on the search last year.
Okay, and where, where was that held?
That was in contractual services, 531.
Contractual, okay.
The part of that, it was part of that, that 30 right there, and 22, there was 30 budget, 22. We haven't spent, we've spent very little of that this year. So it's, we just don't see a need for that next year. And, and you'll see the actual, even in 21, with the search, it's still under 20,000.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, I'm looking at, you know, like the salary lines, I understand, you know, about the planner and the assistant and, you know, that being moved, but, you know, looking at the Town Administrator, you know, salaries from the 2020 actual to 2021 actuals, I mean, there's a big jump there. And then, you know, back down to for the 2022. So I, for some reason, when you were saying about the, you know, the cost for the, the search, I just.
Well, I can only speak to the, I can only speak to the, to 20, to the salary piece of 2022 and 2023, and that's just Town Administrator, that's me. The, you know, there was some transition.
I'm just trying to understand it, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay. Lee, I know, Leah, Rich, you were here.
Yeah, I, maybe Todd, you can give us an explanation? I don't want to between the 2020 and the 2021 and versus the 2022. Yeah, so what you're talking about is the increase in the 168, 393.
Yeah.
Brian?
I may be mis-murmuring, but wasn't there a period of overlap between the two town administrators before Ari?
That was, yeah, that was actually part of what was in 2020.
It was the end of 20 and the beginning of 21.
Yeah. So there was overlap.
There were buybacks for two town administrators ago that occurred in the summer of 20, which was FY21. So that was part of the overlap that Brian's referring to.
But yes, we paid two town administrators for June, July and part of August in that one of those years. Any other questions from the Finance Committee on anything that we have going on here? I think moving the part-time person to Human Resources is a good move because that way, you know, when Lil needs someone, it just, I think the bookkeeping looks much neater that way.
Yeah, they're floaters, so floaters should be managed out of HR.
Yep.
It should, yeah. Okay, so I'll move along. We have Finance Committee's budget, $400 is the basic budget, we have a reserve fund number of 150, that could be adjusted as we go along on the process, but that's, that's a good place to start, similar to last year. Legal expenses, we increased a bit. We are, you know, trying to find ways to keep those numbers down. I think with the planner on board, we're going to have some savings there. We've tried, I'm trying to my end to try to keep costs down a little bit and not utilize council as much as, as much, and you know, if we have, maybe some other ideas as the year comes along, we'll talk about those as well. Todd alluded to, try to do that, Appeals Board, that is just the ZBA. Now, Todd alluded to the re sort of reorganization of some of the facility support budgets, and you see that in on pages fifteen and sixteen. Historic townhouse went goes to zero, historic library goes to zero, other general government goes to zero. Those are all basically dumped into public buildings and properties. So we see public buildings and properties going up by seven point six percent. It's all being pulled from, you know, six fifty pulled from townhouse, eleven thousand from general government, although ten thousand went to, so eleven, a thousand of it that went to there, four thousand from from historic library, so most of that money is just moved in. The, we have the normal budget for town reports and for cable advisory committee and historical commission as well. And that's pretty much everything under that 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 ages. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just have a question on the public buildings and properties, so I'm sure, Todd, I shouldn't say I'm sure, do you you keep a chart of accounts, though, for each particular building?
Yes, we will, so and we've been doing that with the facilities budget, one ninety three, which you'll see on Wednesday night. So the town, the town votes a number and then it's expended at various public buildings and we do track it by building, so we can report back to you how much we're spending at any one facility for maintenance or, in this case, going forward utilities.
Yeah.
Venus is very, Venus is very adept at that, very adept at that.
Okay. Anyone else questions?
Yeah, sorry, I have a question about the other contracted services under public buildings and properties that seems to like a thirty five percent in decrease. But how do you, what's the explanation for that? I mean, that's a good thing, but what's the explanation for that? It went from seven hundred and two dollars to thirty two thousand, down to twenty one thousand, other contracted services.
Twenty actual was twenty thousand, yeah, I'm not, Todd, Christina, do you guys remember that? What that one was, I'm drawing a blank.
From memory, I think we had some rental of storage units that are no longer storage pods that are no longer there. We did, we did a thorough review of this and and we feel that what we've put in is is more than adequate for for the needs. I think a lot of it's just, you know, aligning things to to be in the right location. And I think there was very little expense last year, partly because of the shutdown. I don't know if Christina remembers anything additional, but.
Yeah, I mean, I have to go back and check my notes, but from from my memory, we went back and we looked at the historical spend in that line, and it had a lot of variability. And so this, we just sort of felt like was right sizing that line for for the coming fiscal year.
A couple of places in the or in the throughout the budget where we did that. You know, the other, the other general government contracted services is another example of that, what we did between that and the contracted services and now select board, select board budget. But we can, Darren, we can certainly get you a more cogent explanation than that.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, the number went down, so it's not, it's not an issue. That's always a good thing, I guess, but I'm just trying to understand what the contracted services are, I guess.
Yeah, no, we'll get you, we'll get it, we'll get an inventory for you.
But it also, so it sounds like in general, you looked at all the contractual services and kind of reevaluated prior numbers and estimates and just took another look at it, right?
That's right.
Okay, no, that's good. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Brian?
I was going back and looking at like electricity and water service for public buildings and properties. So the historic townhouse, obviously, you're rolling those numbers into the bigger budget, but we only had two hundred and fifty in the budget for electricity and nothing listed for water there last year. So we're, and I know I was rented out, but where are these?
Yeah, so 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 most of this, Brian, I think is is and Ari will correct me. Is is around the the old library that it's it's no longer being leased out. And the leaseholder would would pay a substantial portion of the utilities.
All right.
And so now we're occupying that building, it's being sort of repurposed for inspection and health and conservation. And so, you know, we don't have, we have some data. But, um, you know, most of that increase is really related to adding that building back into the inventory.
Yes, I was just a little surprised by eight thousand dollars in electricity, given we pulled all the cooking equipment out of there, nothing but lights now.
Well, we can take a closer look at it. Yeah.
But if I can, isn't that a compilation of all the other buildings in there, too? It's not, yes, it wasn't just for the historic library, it's for the the townhouse and.
Yeah, one ninety two is now, yes.
Yes, so it's the fire station, the town hall, the old townhouse, the historic townhouse and the old library, yes.
Right.
If you look on page sixteen, you'll see that six sixty historic library zeroed out.
Right, but it gets still like we went from almost nineteen thousand and twenty one to nineteen thousand and twenty two. Big jump now in twenty three. I mean, we generally try to be more efficient in electricity. And the townhouse doesn't seem to add up that much.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Rich.
One of the things, Brian, in this, in the old town hall, we have put heating and air conditioning in there now, which wasn't in there in the past. So the building now can be used, you know, all year round, and I know that Lillian has been using that for loading. Boating and stuff, so there is an additional cost there. If you look at the old town hall, you see there was nothing. I mean, it was a couple hundred dollars, so I'm not saying it's all of it, but I'm saying.
That's fair, that's a good point, I forgot.
One thing I would, one thing I would also know, Brian, if you look at historical library, you'll see that the FY twenty actual features is forty six hundred, twenty one was twenty five hundred.
Right.
So only three hundred in the budget twenty two, which is probably low, but it was, it was vacant at the time, basically. And let's see here, and so so for twenty three, the base number would have was going to be, you know, probably closer to five or six thousand dollars.
So, okay, I could buy that, maybe even if it was twenty five hundred, like Rich said, if we've got more for AC during the summer, it could have pushed it back up.
It's gonna be hiring, it's it's it's, we have every reason to expect, given that's gonna be fully occupied now, that that building will have a much higher load.
All right. Be curious to see.
Plus, I do know that when they do the fall festival and like the Christmas tree, so now that the heating and the air conditioning is in there, people are using it, so whereas before, even those people that use the facility, they weren't using the the HVAC stuff, so.
It's it's fine if all the numbers work up, it's just you see a forty two percent and a seventy five percent increase in two line items, that's worth asking.
Yeah.
I mean, heating oil certainly has gone up.
Yep. So is it possible for Ari, for you to work on for tomorrow night, right when we get going? The answer to Darren's question and the answer to Brian's question, as soon as we start, we can jump to those answers and then.
Yeah, I'll give you the baseline electricity for the different components. We should have those from pre transfer, pre consolidation, so we should have those.
Okay, and then Darren's.
Right.
Yeah.
Like a track services, yeah.
Yeah, mine's more of a curiosity thing, it's 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 not, it's not the big deal, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't feel like you need it twenty four hours for mine either.
Well, I mean, we could do it tomorrow or the next night, but you know, I bet, I I bet Ari would rather get the answers and get the question answered as soon as possible, too, so. Okay. Do we have any other questions on anything? Anyone?
Anything on the town administrative budget or in general?
Um, just on this town administrator budget right now. And then, um, any other question in general, because I think we're done with that, so any other question in general?
I do, Madam Chair, I know, Ari, you mentioned the the non union, the COLA increases, and I just wanted some clarification. You know, we have had four new hires this year, two of them were new positions. And each of them, you know, came in a little bit higher than, you know, what was anticipated. And so I know, because they haven't been here the full year, what is the justification for the three percent COLA increase for those positions that weren't here for the full year?
I think there are a number of justifications. First of all, is I was following the the board's direction when we proposed the three percent for all full time non union positions. Second of all, the inflation rate nationally right now, I believe, is over seven percent. So I think we're we're doing, I think we're probably doing okay at three, giving three percent COLA. This is not a merit increase, no, if it's a merit increase, you do it on your anniversary. It's a COLA increase and COLA increases are traditionally provided on July one. If you were not to give a COLA increase for those positions on July one, maybe some of them, there's at least one that you'd be going over a year and a half without a raise. Which is a long time, especially in this environment, and frankly, I think it would be unfair to that to that employee. So I think there are a number of reasons to justify that. It's my recommendation that you that you provide it. If July one's the date, then July one's the date, and that's not really the fault of the the individual who was hired, that that's the date. If the board's take another approach, I'm I'm happy to, I'll go with the board's direction.
I understand, I know, I understand exactly what you're saying. It's just I don't think that we've ever had anything in our policy to address that. So I mean, a year and a half is a long time without an increase, but you know, maybe that's something that we need to consider. You know, in our policy going forward.
Okay.
Anybody else, any questions? Rich?
I'm all set.
Okay. Uh, any comments from anybody, Todd or Ari, Christina, thank you, everybody for it's a great book, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, even I can follow along, so you did a good job.
Think you're selling yourself short, Larry. Um, okay.
Replication, Larry.
All right. Okay, so if there is nothing else going once, going twice, I will let the finance committee. Um, did we lose Darren? Wait a minute.
We lost Darren.
Yeah. He overcorred.
I, I um, I guess you can close out your meeting anyways, is the, is one of you the vice chair?
Nope.
That'd be Brian, I'm going Brian, Brian's it.
Senior.
Yes.
Um, so the finance committee did have some business to do now that we've lost Darren, we don't have a forum. So I guess we can push this till tomorrow night.
Okay.
Darren's coming back in.
Darren's coming back in.
Okay.
Are you with us, Darren?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
My computer just, my computer just closed down, sorry about that, my laptop.
Okay, so we're at the point where we're done with questions. Did you have any questions before?
Uh, no, no more questions on the budget tonight. I have a, we do have a couple of agenda items the finance committee has to go over, but no other questions with the budget.
Okay, so we'll let you do that.
Okay, this shouldn't, this will be very quick. So one, we have some minutes from the November eighth meeting. They were sent out last week, hopefully Brian and Larry is, oh, yeah, Larry's still here, had a chance to review them.
I did.
Yes, I did.
Any comments or questions?
I had no corrections.
Okay, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the finance committee meeting minutes for November eighth, two thousand twenty one.
All in favor, Brian?
Day, I.
Larry?
Austin, I.
And Beal's eye. Last item is, we've received a we've received a email about a designating a representative to participate in the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School District Budget Process. I've done this in the last couple of years. I'm looking, I'm hoping that either Larry or Brian or maybe Katie and Adam, who are not here tonight, would be willing to take that on for this year. I think there's a meeting coming up. So I don't know if we have some discussion or any questions, what it entails. It's basically just attending a meeting. I think this year it's in person or on Zoom, you have the option and listening to the the school budget and kind of asking questions as you go.
Well, you've done this before, but how how entailed is it, you know, schedule wise?
It's a couple of meetings. It's, there's a meeting coming up, and then I think there's a probably a follow up meeting, kind of similar to the budget meeting in general, the budget meetings that we have.
Our budget meetings can go long, if I recall correctly, so.
Oh, you mean, like, individual meeting?
Time, time wise, are we looking at, you know, twenty hours, thirty hours, what are we looking at?
Oh, no, I mean, Rich, you you're involved with those, we're talking a couple hours, maybe, is that fair?
Yeah, I would say a couple of hours, yeah.
Yeah. So if we, I mean, if we don't have to pick someone tonight, but something we need to to decide if someone on the finance committee will attend.
Yeah, if we knew when the meetings were, I might be able to.
That'd be helpful if we know those.
Okay, why don't I come back with more details for tomorrow's meeting?
That'd be good, yeah.
That's absolutely, okay.
Do we have to? What's on, what's posted for our agenda tomorrow, though? Do we have to continue or something, or?
I don't know, Tracy, can we discuss this tomorrow or?
Yes, you can take it up under old business. I believe I have old business on your posting.
You do, yeah.
You do, yeah.
And worst case scenario, you could always just take, do it, and then you could, at your next meeting, ratify the vote.
Okay, yeah, that'll be good.
Because I believe the first budget meeting is Thursday.
Yeah, it's this week, right?
Right, so, you know, we definitely need to do something tomorrow, by tomorrow, so let them know.
Okay, we'll figure that out tomorrow's old business.
Okay.
That'll probably knock me out of contention, then.
Actually, I'm away Thursday.
Okay. We'll talk to Katie and Adam.
If it's gonna be Zoom, then maybe I can pull it off, but I need to know that. If, you know, if you can email some of the details, I'll take a look at it. If I can squeeze it in, I don't have a problem with it, but I do, I have a lot of travel and come up for work.
Okay, I'll send everyone an email with the details prior to tomorrow night.
Thank you, Darren.
Sure. Any other business, finance committee, old business, new business?
Madam Chair.
Yeah. Yeah.
We also, Darren was on the Freetown Lakeville regional FinCon committee, so somebody has to be appointed from the finance committee for that, you know, as well. Not right now, I'm just saying, you're gonna be having.
Get it on your agenda.
Couple of weeks, so that's something we have to do, too, Darren.
Yeah, thank you, Rich, for reminding me, yes. So we will, we will take care of both those appointments.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we can close the finance committee.
Oh, sure, I'll make a motion to close the finance committee meeting as of eight sixteen PM.
I'll second it.
Okay, take a vote, Brian?
Day, I.
Austin, I.
And Beal's eye, thank you, and we'll see everyone tomorrow night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I make a motion, I make a motion to adjourn the select's meeting.
Well, we have new business and old business.
I'm sorry, did we have?
I don't know, does anyone have any new business? No new business, old business?
I, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that we're still doing, for anyone that's still with us, the fire department's still doing testing and they have all kinds of information on their webpage, so if anyone wants COVID information, they can check out the fire department's webpage. Go ahead.
I do, I do have just some old business. I was the designee to the superintendent search for the school, school district, so I just wanted to provide an update to the board of where we are. We had met, we reviewed thirty two of applications, and we identified ten potential candidates that we wanted to schedule for interviews. From those ten, one took a job at another district and then two backed out, so that left us with seven. So this past Saturday, we interviewed four candidates. And this coming Saturday, we will identify, we will be interviewing three, and then from there, we'll have a discussion. And this coming Saturday, we will identify, uh, we will be interviewing three, and then from there, we'll have a discussion, um. To see which candidates, um, you know, will, will move forward to the next level.
So it was seven, like semifinalists, so to speak?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, any? Questions on that?
I, I just have a question, uh, Madam Chair for Lorraine, um, when we appointed you to represent the board on, um. I think it was January twenty-fourth, if I remember the date correctly. One of the things you were gonna try to do was put together the expectations of what you, what we expected as a town to be the town administrator, uh, excuse me, to be the superintendent. Did you do that?
I did.
Well, we haven't provided the information to the board.
Nope, I, um, reached out to our town administrator to find out, um, because my meeting was the next evening, so I did meet with, um. Or asked Ari to provide what was important to him, and he provided, you know, great, great insight and, uh. Took that forward.
That was it? Can you provide us that information? I'd like to know as a board member, what you presented to the search committee, so we can know what the expectations are, cause. I didn't get an email asking, asking me what my expectations were, so.
No, I, um, as a, if you remember correctly, during the meeting, I asked if there was anything from the, uh, the two of you. Um, that you wanted to see, um, in the superintendent, and you just said to. You didn't have any input, so.
Oh, that's not true, I didn't say that.
I filled out the survey that they did.
Yeah.
No way.
Okay.
So can you, can you provide us the information that you told the search committee of what our expectations are from a town, of first new superintendent?
We actually didn't have that discussion, um, we went through the thirty-two candidates, I had, you know. What, less than twenty-four hours to go through thirty-two applicants, and so I did review them. Um, and identified ten, you know, based on, you know. Conversation or the information that I got from, you know, from Ari and, you know, my past experience and, and, you know, working with the two of you. Um, you know, identified ten that I felt would be good candidates to move forward. Um, and then we just, we went from there, so there were other people in, in the room, and I felt confident that the. Ten candidates that we did, uh, wanna move forward to that interview level were. Candidates that I think would represent and be able to, um, support the interest in the best interest of both towns.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and my question to you is, if you're representing the town, what was your expectations for new superintendent?
Well, when I reviewed the, um, the applications, I looked for regional experience, I looked for superintendency experience. Um. And budgetary, special education experience, teaching experience, longevity. Um, locality, demographic, um. So I put all that into, um, expectations. Um, when we did get to the point of asking the questions, um. And I don't have it right in front of me, but I, I'll try to do it, um, not verbatim, but my question, I'm the first, you know, um. Question for the panelist was, um, from a, a regional or a town perspective. That what practice would they implement as a superintendent to provide a strong collaboration? Um. Transparency and, uh, continued, uh. Work with the towns, and that was basically the question, because of the importance of having that ongoing. Interactions with the town. And updates and collaboration and the transparency. So that was the question that I got to ask.
Okay. Um, alright. Um. Does anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adjourn. Okay, um, by the way, in the chat, we do, I just saw it, uh, if I miss anything on the chat, if someone sees it, I know Kevin's usually pretty good. Um, but it was from John. Saying he had problems, but if anyone ever sees something in the chat that I haven't. Addressed, if you can let me know, cause I don't want anyone's comments from the crowd or the town or whatever to go on. I just saw it, I'm not even sure what time it came in, so going forward, if we can just keep the chair on her toes, please. Um, alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'm second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, LaCamer, I.
And Fabian, I. Alright, thank you, everyone.